Would we be paying the same tuition calculation for our sixth graders as for our seventh and eighth graders?
We could have that discussion in the future. Like if we talk about we have zipper clause, you have a separate, totally separate contract for sixth. That's a whole nother law then. We can obviously have discussion any time around.
I think that might be something that would be good to have a discussion with them at some point to kind of sort of formalize that question. If it's important, we'll be considering that at some point in the future, that'd be a number that we'd have to certainly grapple with anyways.
Did I miss it? Is the zipper clause already in here?
No.
No, that's if...
If we were looking like this is great. Gotcha, thank you.
In the future, you'd say...
Okay.
I just think to have two separate contracts, that's just me.
Okay.
And I think that certainly this contract, I think, would indicate that it would be just, we'd be adding sixth grade to this contract, which would mean we'd be saying, paying the same tuition calculation. I think at some point that we would probably be asking, would it be possible to have different consideration for, a different calculation for our sixth graders? And frankly, the question we might be asking at some point in the future. So I think this indicates that we'd be paying the same...
Yes.
By the same calculation.
That would be my recommendation.
Which I'm, yeah, but we'd still have to ask. So I think that we'll be considering this for probably our November meeting to put forward to the voters. We're good with it? Any more discussion on the tuition contract? Morgan, British, anything? Any other business?
I have one in between. More of a citizen's comment and more for Joe, and maybe you guys could pass this on. Maybe this is more of a citizen's comment. Sports things. Now that you're bringing sixth grade on, I know in the past, haven't been allowing sixth graders to play on some of the middle school sports. And I really hope you guys consider that, instead of sending our kids to conduct. Baseball's gonna go unless you let sixth graders play. Unless your baseball be in conduct. Unless you let sixth graders play, then you might get another year out of there. So, I guess there's more for Joe.
I think it would depend on the availability of the book team. In other words, soccer's always a big thing, so if...
Well, no, I thought it depends on sport for the season, on what kids are playing. Sometimes they pull up, stuff, picks it below.
Last year, baseball had eight. We played, and every time we went to go somewhere, we had to borrow two kids from the other team.
And save us off.
And they wouldn't call up the sixth.
I think there was a reason for that, I'm sorry, I didn't take it off. I think there was a reason, because when my son was playing on it, there was a reason why, about the sixth graders. So it might be different...
Now we're moving...
Why are we moving it? But that's something we can check with Joe and check with Vance on it.
Yeah, rec was up to six, but he sometimes would steal sixth grader for seventh, eight teams. Especially with basketball, I mean, I haven't played that.
But the baseball, they didn't. And I, there was something, there was something there that I remember, but I don't know, I can't tell you exactly. But it is something we can look into.
We have combined, I was just gonna say, we have combined the five-six soccer team at the rec level now with Jackson and Bartlett students are playing together.
Yeah.
Because of a numbers issue.
Right. I know it was just something with the baseball, and I can't remember what it is, but we can look into it and we'll get back to you about that.
Because you know, once we start sending them know that, we're never gonna bring them back again. So it's hard to bring it back again.
Great, okay.
Next meeting, may I second? Twenty seventeen, Bartlett. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and call the meeting to a halt. Today I'm gonna read what we have on the back of our agendas all the time, just a little bit of information for our sixth graders who have showed up to present us with information this evening. Welcome to the Jackson School Board meeting. If you wish to be heard by the board, please note citizen comments, agenda items, at the beginning of the agenda. This section is to accommodate visitors who wish to address the board regarding an agenda item. An additional citizen's comment opportunity is provided at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. The comment section of the agenda may not exceed fifteen minutes unless extended by vote of the board. Occasionally, the board may suspend its rules to allow visitor participation at the time an issue of specific interest is being addressed. During public session, the board shall not hear complaints against personnel. Visitors should not expect the response to their comments or questions under the above, since the board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. The superintendent, without speaking for the board, may offer clarification as appropriate. When the board has taken a position, the chairperson may stick to the board's position. The board's goal for the conduct of its meeting is to accomplish its work within a qualitative timeframe. Respecting the participation of visitors as well as all other who contribute to the effectiveness of its meetings. The board agenda therefore is arranged to reserve adequate time for quality board discussion of priority agenda items. The board welcomes community input. If anyone wishes to discuss a specific topic in greater detail, the board requests that you submit the topic, supporting materials, and/or information to the SAU office ten days prior to the scheduled board meeting. Agendas are prepared one week in advance of the meeting. The Jackson School Board meets in regular session on the third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM, with special meetings as necessary. The board appreciates your attendance this evening and invites your continued interest in its work on behalf of the children and residents of the district. We'll get right into the meeting. First up is to approve the minutes from September nineteenth. Any discussion or changes?
I do, actually, section nine, where it says that I had said we should talk about Gail cutting a teacher. I just kinda wanted to clarify that I wasn't saying we should cut a teacher. I was saying we should give Gail instructions, on whether or not we will send her to cut this teacher. I'm against it, actually.
So how would you like that?
I don't know. It just sounds like that I would say...
Do you wanna strike that?
Maybe just strike it completely, yeah.
Because it doesn't really reflect what was discussed.
No, but then you gotta strike the next line, and then the next line, to strike that.
I can reword it to make it accurate.
I think that more along my lines were that we should let Gail know not to waste her time cutting a teacher, because we're not gonna...
Recommend it.
We're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna recommend that.
Any other changes? Are you done? All those in favor? Sorry, I didn't say before to, Jenna and Soldey was, is out of town on unexpected business that she had this evening, so she was unable to attend. Braces to citizen comments. Is there anything at this point? Okay?
I just wanted to say that I was disappointed about the scheduling of the Listening Post. It only allowed four and a half days of advertising. And subsequently, the title that was used to describe the Listening Post was not clear on what the post was about. Didn't describe an explanation for why we were having it, and didn't explain that it was going to affect, we wanted taxpayer and parent involvement in it. Also, in the recorded minutes, the video recording was clearly stated twice that the September ninth school board meeting was the date on which you, the school board was going to decide when to schedule the Listening Post. The Listening Post ended up being held on that date, on September nineteenth. And the decision to make it that date happened four and a half days prior to that. It wasn't enough time.
And I apologize, Penny. That was a mistake by myself, and I think Kevin. We, he, the day we scheduled that, he asked if he should schedule it in, because it was his understanding that we were supposed to have it that night. And I was under the understanding that you were, that we were going to schedule it that evening. I meant to at some point print out the email that you sent to me regarding that, because the way you worded that was really perfect. It wasn't only the scheduling of it, I think that the important part of it too is how we announce it and what it is. I think that the topic and what we're discussing should have been much more clear and transparent. But because there was confusion as to whether we were going to have it or not, I thought it was at least important that we have that first one. See how it went, and see where we went from there. And we will be discussing that probably very shortly here.
We did put it on the agenda.
To recap, the Listening Post. I think in that discussion, we're gonna talk a little bit about whether or not we should have another one, or how we wanna move forward with it. So you bear with us for a couple minutes, I think we'll get into that and have a discussion about that again there. Any other citizen comments at this point?
No, Melissa's doing it.
Here now, we'll move on to presentation of school items.
So even though it says Ferry Beach Report there, our sixth graders are not really prepared to talk about that this evening, but I would like to ask the board if they could move the, consider the sixth grade proposal, which is listed under the principal's report, to this place in the agenda, because they have a presentation and a proposal they'd like to present.
I'd be happy to do that.
I'm gonna get them started. So, some of you know that for a while, three or four years, we've been...
Excuse me, could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Joan Weissler, I'm the fifth and sixth grade teacher here. So, you know, we've been talking on and off for three or four years about an outdoor classroom facility. And we started with things like art space in the woods, with benches and that kinda stuff. And several years ago, we had talked about making kind of a pavilion or a gazebo kind of place for us to have a covered learning facility. So we've been, since the beginning of the school year basically, have been talking about that, and would like to make a proposal that we in fact do that. And the sixth graders have something they would like to read. So if you guys stand up, so you can talk to, address the board, and you can stand where you are.
And when you do, sorry.
Go ahead.
And when you do, it's fifteen sets, we usually, there aren't usually this many people that are in our meetings, it's fantastic. There are, so it is custom when you address a board at a public meeting that you stand and you state your name for the record, so that the people, so they can, they've been assisting us here. When you do address us, state your name first.
So, so, can I just say, or have them say their names all the way through, so their reading kinda flows? So go ahead, introduce yourselves.
Bethra Doherty.
Megan Markhy.
Noah Noel.
Jocelyn Soldey.
Sawyer Maddles.
Enough, go ahead.
We are here today to present our idea for our sixth grade project. We want to build a thirty-six by twenty-four pavilion in our schoolyard. We want this because it will give us a sheltered space for cookouts. It will also provide a space for maple sugaring, and most valuably, a place for JGS students to work outside. This also gives the sixth grade an opportunity to leave the legacy that we can always remember and be remembered by.
One of the reasons we need want this outdoor pavilion is so that we have a place to put a grill for our use. One of the community members, Dan Mahood, has pointed out that the, that we have to bring a grill back and forth for all the cookouts, which makes it kinda difficult. If we have this outdoor pavilion, it will make it a whole lot easier for the PTO to host cookouts. We could also use this covered space for activities they call festival, in our end of the year session, sports.
One benefit of having a pavilion is the maple sugaring area. Last year, when the fifth and sixth grades did maple sugaring, sugaring with Tin Mountain, it was a very educational, fun, and cool learning experience. Many schools do not have the chance to do this, but we are lucky enough to do it. The convenience of having sugaring, of having a maple sugaring area right next to our school would be amazing for kids in JGS, and they could keep making more maple syrup batches all the time, instead of only once. We could also have the maple sugaring area for the rest of the community, so everybody can be involved. Kids would not only learn about trees and sap, but also learn how the sugaring process works.
The pavilion is a multi-use outdoor classroom where kids and adults can work. It is a covered space for us to work outside in most weather circumstances. There will be picnic tables inside the pavilion, so we can eat and work there. My class feels like they work and do better outside. Also, last year's sixth grade were surveyed, and they all said they focused better outside. The pavilion will provide a variety of learning spaces for students at JGS, so we can have more spaces to read, write, journal, and do science. I think it will be very useful to have the outdoor pavilion. It will be great for the sixth graders to do this project, because it would give us a chance to leave a legacy for future classes of the Jackson Grammar School. It will also give us a chance to do something good for the community. I think that other students will be inspired to do projects. This project will also give the sixth grade class in the future a chance to add on to it and leave their own legacy. It's hard to imagine all the creative opportunities that this outdoor space can inspire.
An outdoor classroom has been something that Mr. Bowski and the staff have been thinking about for a while. It would be a great place for cookouts and maple sugaring. Missy agrees with our plan, and we've already plotted out the building with Mr. Stoki. There are many reasons why we should build this pavilion. We would use it for outside learning, for covered cookout space, and community events. This is a chance for our sixth grade class to leave something to JGS that other students can be motivated by to add their own legacy part in the future. I hope that you agree with all of the reasons and approve our project.
So they also have, on the board behind you, we've, on a map, have outlined where it would go. We kinda planned to take you outside to view the site, where they measured with Mr. Stoki, but it's a little dark out there right now. But Mr. Stoki did add flags, so it's really obvious to see in the daylight where the building would see. And the kids did their own first preliminary drawings of front side or back elevations, or 3D drawings. Can I ask a question? Yeah, absolutely. So, as you know, we have people that rent the Whitney Center. Is this a space that you would see us sharing with people who use the Whitney Center, or would it just be for school use? We didn't anticipate that question, so we... We have a list of questions that we anticipated that wasn't... We have to worry about it. Well, maybe you'll think about that, because I would love to know your thoughts. We, when we were out there with Mr. Stoki, we talked about when people use the Whitney Center, they have access to an outdoor, covered outdoor space as well? Jerry, can the audience ask a question?
Please.
Is there any issue with the Jackson building code and building permit situation? So who knows the answer to that question? One of you guys do. Because what do we do after the school board says yes?
They ask the town for approval?
Yeah.
So what do you see, foresee the timeline as being?
So, post-and-beam buildings are, like, have been around for hundreds of years.
I think they came back, started right away, we hope to have a full, fashionable timber, frame racing in the late spring.
So you all will build it?
Yes, y'all. Y'all? Absolutely. Absolutely, Ben, you wanna talk about the, that might not be on your card, but you know who will build it?
Yeah. We, we'll hope to get, like, some community volunteers to help build this, and Mr. Marshall has contacts who are loggers, who may help us with trees, and Mr. Marshall himself will be milling and cut...
Joinery?
If I can give more information on that. I have a portable dance hall though, which is a woodmizer, it takes trees up to thirty-six inches in diameter, twenty-one feet long, and it can convert logs into usable lumber and timbers. So it would be ideal for, we could bring it to site here, and the kids could see the whole process of turning lumber into products. And then also, I have a lot of experience with timber framing, which Jocelyn, you wanna give a little background on that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what was the question that that answer was to?
Like, it was last, like, hundreds of most of the time, buildings last hundreds of years.
So that's why we chose post-and-beam construction, because it's traditional. Any ideas about how much these things cost, or what materials it's gonna cost, or anything with that?
Yeah, we believe that we can complete the project with money from grants and donations of time and material, as well as volunteers. As I said, Mr. Marshall have already talked to Missy about some of this, this, as I said, can give more information.
So, we already started talking and looking at some available grant monies. You know, we have this pretty good-sized REAP, Rural Education Grants, and one opportunity that that affords is for innovative projects. And we think this, we hope that this will fit under the category of innovative projects, and start there. We also, in terms of materials, we hope to find a lot of materials that can be donated or given at cost, and all those kinda things. We'll be reaching out to the community. This is only the kids' first writing project with this. They'll be writing letters to the community to ask for volunteer, and donation of materials if they have it. A couple of people on staff have already said that they need trees cleared on their property, so we'll be looking at that, you know, so we already have, those kinda questions have already started to be asked. So we hope that there will be no cost to the Jackson taxpayers.
Well, I would say that that was a very persuasive one. And after the school board says yes, there will be, I mean, so, if I, understanding this from a process standpoint, for us, what you need from us is approval to construct it on the school grounds. And that's what our role in this would be, is that we give you approval to construct something on the school grounds. And I did have several questions arise in my mind as, you know, you presented, and all of those questions were answered during your presentation. So it was a very good, very thorough job that you did, and I applaud you for your effort for that. And the most important part to me was really how Mr., if Mr. Stoki was involved, and if he was, you know, involved in the placement of it, because the biggest consideration for us really is, is does it fit in on the campus, or how we use the campus? And if he's saying that it does, then that's something I think that we would have to consider very heavily. So it was good to have that information. And I think that I've heard enough information to vote on this tonight. Does the school board feel that it needs more information at this point to vote to get approval for this? So entertain a motion to...
Some progress on the way. I don't know how we do with blanket approval. Maybe it goes to the facility committee to take a look at, any other things that kinda make sure there's no hassle between the town and the school.
Was it, were you guys planning on doing like a business plan kinda thing? Or, you know, maybe not official, but, you know, fairly official? Yeah, that'd be great to see. So I think that we could just entertain a motion to grant approval to move along with the project forward, move forward with the project. And the next step would be, once you get your building approved and the actual spot approved, then you would come back to the board to ask for approval to construct it where it is actually going to be constructed. The money that comes along the way, get to prove, whether it's through grants or through donations, get to prove through possibly assigned these anyways, so we'll always have control over that no matter what. So I think that we could just grant, if I didn't hit a motion to grant approval for moving forward with the project. Does that sound good? Anybody wanna make that motion? Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Please, John.
I did have one more thing for the sixth graders there, that if this goes beyond June twenty-first, I would expect you guys to still be heavily involved.
Through the summer.
Yeah, just walk away and grab the exact spread.
Nice job, I think that's really exciting. Sounds fun, yeah.
I can't speak for Dan Mahood, but I bet he'd love the grill.
Oh, that reminds me, do so too. I think one idea that I heard from this popped up was Jess's question, which actually isn't a question for you, that's another question for the board to answer eventually. If we have a building constructed on the school grounds, it's actually, we'd have to the school board to decide how that building got used. And we would be the ones that could decide whether it could be shared with the Whitney Center or not, and I think that does a great idea. Good job, guys. And so you have to sit through the rest of our meeting. Participate at any point, and you have questions, don't be afraid to ask, because we don't just wait for citizens to... I'm in, joking. I'm sure you've got more and better things to do, but if you do want to leave, if it is appropriate to get up and it won't be disturbing to us, so you can, if you wish to. You are very welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I'm gonna swap out the preschool meeting with a recap of the Listening Post, which is one of the committee members, those have a, the party, the committee gave up to you, so we're gonna, we're gonna enter the preschool for the presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Delavala, and I'm the chair of the Public Preschool Committee that has been meeting for the last six to ten months in preparation for tonight. Looking at options for early childhood education here in Jackson, while I'm waiting for the PowerPoint to set up, which is the highest pressure point of this night, because I'm not, what do you recall, technically savvy.
Get those kids back.
Also, I'd like to thank you for bringing after the sixth graders, because that way it's gonna allow you to shine, Jerry. While we're waiting, I'd like to just pass out, we have packets for the school board and staff. And we have copies, this green copy, which you can get, is a copy of the projections for what we're be talking about tonight, and the pink copy is the actual financial pro forma. So we'll be talking about those in a moment, but... So tonight, what we are hoping is that we will give you an overview of the process that we've been engaged in for the past six to ten months. We'll let you know what our recommendation is for this time, and we will try to give you some of our reasons for why we did what we did, with the understanding that this is a starting point for the board, and a starting point for the community. And so we hope what you'll do is, as I'm talking, if you have questions, please raise your hand and let me know. If you can't hear me in the back, let me know, I'll try to speak up. I'm happy to go more into depth on anything. I'm pretty sure that every one of my committee members will tell you, I will spend as much as you want talking about all of this. But in the interest of time, I really am gonna try to simplify it for you. If there's something I want more information on, you can ask me while I'm speaking, or afterwards, I can get you paperwork on pretty much anything that we're talking about tonight. The committee members that are sitting here with me tonight, Lisa Crane, Pristine Pro, Gail Dombowski, Dan Mahood, Amy Murphy, Pam Stimson, and Penny Miller, have really spent an inordinate number of hours and thought cycles helping to work this, this proposal out. So, thank you to you all. There we go. What is in front of you? Some of you are already looking at that. I know that's what happens, assuming you give out that paperwork, you're gonna be looking at it, and that's fine, because it might take you a little time to look at it. I do hope you'll, you'll follow me as I talk about our process. For those of you that have packets, they're color-coded, so that you can easily reference what you need to reference. Basically, they include a proposal, the pro forma, the projections, and then whatever documents we thought would help you to understand why we did what we did, and would support where we're at tonight. where we're at tonight. For anyone in the audience that doesn't have a packet, the reason we didn't print them was because we weren't sure how many people would be here and we didn't want to waste paper if we ended up with nobody showing up. If you want a full packet, you are welcome to. Just let us know. So again, thank you to this committee because you really have gone above and beyond. You might be wondering who these people are, right? You see them, you, you see some of us running around the circle, running businesses, dropping parents off, looking hurried in the coffee shop. The fact is, the eight people that sat around these tables within the past six to 10 months are a lot more than just the people that you kind of see passing by. We've been fortunate that in our small community and in this small group that has been looking at these issues, we also had at that table, in those eight people, taxpayers, parents of preschoolers, parents of Jackson grammar school students, parents of Jackson grammar school alumni, taxpayers with no school-aged children, a homeschooler. At our table, we had educators and administrators. We had a grandparent, we had working parents, we had stay-at-home parents, and of course, because they showed up time after time and answered my call, whether it was through the phone or to the table, we had volunteers. Specifically, what we were asked was to prepare a public preschool proposal for Jackson for the 2017-2018 academic year, if appropriate, for evaluation by the school board for the fall of eighteen, by the fall of 2016 for 2017-2018. We were asked that by the board and the board had been asked to do that by taxpaying citizens at our meeting last fall. Our goals, primarily, our first goal was to gather as much information as possible to understand it and to fill in any gaps with what our understanding was of, was of the issues. Of course, with that information, we wanted to just find out, is there something that will work for Jackson and the needs and the desires that we have for our educational community? If so, let's bring it forward. Gathering that information, we started with taxpayer input. The committee really started in this spring, but as you know, this, or hopefully as you know, or may have heard, the process of looking at a potential preschool or preschool, early childhood education in Jackson, actually started last year with the Bartlett School Board and the Jackson School Board. We had a joint committee that was looking at this issue. So starting back then, we, we started contacts with the community, talking about what does it mean to look at these issues? We had meetings, we've had listening posts, we've had a carousel discussion, we've had community conversations, which might be my favorite part because coming from suburban New York and then living in cities most of my life, it really was kind of fun to be at the bakery and then have a pretty serious conversation about what early childhood education means. Or to be at, uh, running with my daughter and get stopped on the trail to talk about what some of the financials might look like, what, what are we actually thinking? I welcomed those and I really had a fun time thinking of how nice it is to have a community that actually cares. Uh, probably one of my favorite moments was this last weekend at the Capitol Cup, or I'm sorry, the Valley Cup at the Quarterpotty where we got into a pretty exciting conversation. So we have had a number of community conversations. We had a survey that went out in the early winter and we got wonderful feedback about that. With that is, the results of that are available for anyone who would like those. Uh, we've gotten emails, we've gotten both handwritten letters and typed letters, and we have gotten phone calls. In addition to the taxpayer input, we have spent a significant time speaking with personnel from our own SAU and other SAUs. We have spoken to the Department of Education. We've spoken with lawmakers, we've spoken with New Hampshire Early Childhood Programs, the Department of Childcare Licensing, we've spoken with preschool teachers, elementary school teachers, principals, parents, students. We've spoken to town leaders and of course, we've spoken to each other, sometimes even when we really didn't feel like it, we kept speaking to each other. We have read laws, we have read legal opinions, we have read regulations and news articles and white papers and pretty much everything we could get our hands on. And I'm telling you all this because I want you to understand that this has been a process and we have really tried to give it our best shot. What we've heard with all of this information gathered, and I know these are, there's a lot of words on here, but everything up here really matters because these were things that we heard a number of times from many different places. We heard that Jackson taxpayers care about education. We heard that early childhood education and early intervention matters to Jackson taxpayers. We heard that preschool education has become a necessity for families and that some of our own Jackson families have preschoolers with no parent at home during the day. We heard that many working parents of all of our children, not just precares, but our school-aged children here in Jackson, they have a need for care before and after school. We have heard that while we have quality programs in the Valley, they are not accessible to all. We have also heard that costs matter to Jackson taxpayers. School choice matters to Jackson taxpayers. Location matters to Jackson taxpayers. We were asked, we were told, if we were to put a plan forward for a preschool, it should be in Jackson because it's our solution for our town. We have also heard, and we have tried to listen to all of this, that the nation, the state of New Hampshire, and even our own SAU are moving toward a universal preschool, whether Jackson plans for it or not. Keeping all of that in mind, we looked at a number of plans and options. We thought about doing nothing. We thought about partnering with another school. We thought about creating a public preschool, either half-day or full-day here in Jackson. And when I say here in Jackson or in-house, what I mean is that we looked at putting the preschool here in this building, we looked at putting a preschool in the Whitney Center, we looked at putting a preschool in the church, and we looked at putting a preschool in the old library. We also considered the idea of a voucher system. The first thing that we were able to eliminate was the idea of doing nothing. For us, we thought doing nothing is still a choice. So waiting and seeing is making a choice to give over our educational destiny, if you will, for our preschoolers, to other people to come in and tell us how that is going to be. So for us, we thought we did not want to do that. We wanted to react and respond to what Jackson's individual needs and desires were for what education should be in our own community. So we eliminated doing nothing. The idea of partnering with another school was also eliminated because we felt that by waiting to partner with another school, and in fact, we were doing nothing, there are no public preschool schools for us to partner with at this time, so waiting for someone else to come up with a solution or a, an idea to do something that we are looking at just didn't seem to make sense for us. That left us with looking at a public preschool option or with vouchers. As we did that, we kept thinking, why don't we do what fits Jackson best? We don't want to wait for someone to tell us what to do. We need to do what works best for our community. And so we thought, should we use a current solution like a voucher system? Should we send, give money, public money to parents and kids to use one of the law-regarded private schools? Could we make that work? And we also thought, should we create our own solution to, to fit Jackson best? While we thought of those things, in the forefront of our minds was, what are the actual costs per capita for whatever plan we come up with? We thought, are there any costs that should be borne by caregivers or someone else besides taxpayers? We thought, is this plan, is this option that we are evaluating right now, an actual solution to the problems that we have been presented with or a creative way of enhancing early childhood development in our town? Of course, we were always wanting to make sure that what we did was legal. And so for that reason, we had to cut off vouchers as an option at this time. Why do we, why are we not proposing vouchers tonight? First, for children six and up, they are illegal right now in the state of New Hampshire as we understand it. There's been legal precedent, both in statutory form and in legal cases that have been decided as late as July 2016, that say it's illegal for children six and up to have vouchers. For preschoolers, we felt that we might end up as a test case and that would be very sticky because it would lend us to a very long and potentially expensive legal battle, one that we weren't even sure we were right about because we haven't sought counsel from an attorney, and one that we felt wasn't a good solution in keeping the idea of costs down, especially because we weren't sure if we can do that. Are there any questions up until now about any of this? Or can I keep going? Okay, all right. So what we were left with was the idea of putting a public preschool in Jackson. When we got to thinking about that, we thought long and hard, of course, about the preschoolers that we are looking to, to enhance and to improve their lives. We always have kept in mind costs. We have thought about, what does it mean to be from Jackson, right? It, it was really exciting to actually hear a lot of people, even people who initially came out against any sort of government intervention into education. I did not find anyone, and maybe they just were hiding from me, but I couldn't find anyone who said, no, we don't want to help, uh, early childhood development, we don't care about preschool, we don't care about education. Everyone in Jackson I spoke to agreed that the zero to five years are critical. The issue for, comes down to who pays for that and how is, how are those, um, needs met? So we constantly kept in mind the idea of that we are in a town, we are part of a community and we are not here in a vacuum. And then of course, we had to consider the fact that we already have students who are responsible for it, that you have students you're responsible for and that you have an onus to them first. So we've tried to balance all of these needs and interests and, um, and whatnot. In doing so, the proposal we have for you tonight is a public preschool, which would be part-time, starting in 2017-2018, as you asked, which would be located at the Church Fellowship Hall and Playground in Jackson. It would follow the SAU calendar. The hours would be from nine to one, nine AM to one PM, Monday through Friday, with one hour of before care and two hours of after care to be paid for by caregivers. We would recommend that parents and caregivers provide transportation. And to accomplish this, we would recommend that you hire one part-time teacher, one full-time assistant, and one part-time assistant. The effect of these combined offerings would be a possible maximum day for preschoolers of, uh, eight to three. In your package, you'll see on the Goldenrod page, and this comes from the, um, the annual report. Uh, we are, of course, we have to make an assumption about enrollment and as anyone who's worked on any of these topics knows, it's sort of a moving target. So we're giving you a snapshot tonight, our best guess of what we could expect. And what we've tried to do is kind of look at worst-case scenarios, so we would hope there would be more enrollment, but at worst, what we're looking at from the 2015 data from the census, uh, as well as updates from Gail and her staff, is that we might be able to expect seven Jackson residents would attend a preschool in 2017-2018. In addition to that, although the committee is neither endorsing nor proposing that you tuition students from other towns in, we wanted to recognize that the, that the school, that the school board already has a policy on tuitioning other students and that you would need to make a decision either way. So we thought you might want the information we had based on the research we've done. And what we came up with was that there is possibility, worst-case scenario, of three non-resident students. So the total that we would anticipate at this time today with this little snapshot is 10 students. So to get to the mid-degree, the, um, finances here, and I'd like to thank Dan Mahood especially for all the work he did in running every single scenario we asked him to run, no matter how crazy he was. He, he matted with a smile every single time. Uh, so this is our latest pro forma. Uh, and I will just point out that the bulk of the expenses here has to do with staffing. They come in at $92,236. And for those of you with packets, you'll see there's an addendums sheet on the side. That's the addendum that supports the, the line item. Uh, and for anyone who would like those, again, please feel free to ask afterwards and you can have that. So we have staffing at $92,236. Rent, because we proposed to put it over at the church as opposed to in-house, let me tell you, we tried very hard to see if we could make something worth, worth, work over here. Uh, what we ended up with is a rent of $6,625. Yearly supplies run on average about $2,500. Again, we are neither endorsing nor proposing that you choose any specific curriculum, but we thought you would want that line item so that you could anticipate a worst-case scenario cost. We, in talking with, um, people who recommend them and in looking at some of them, we found that that would probably be at the high end of things, um, depending on what you went with. So that can move as you choose and decide, if you decide to move forward with this. Insurance is $345. In order to update actually any classroom that we would use and to make it appropriate for a preschool classroom, the cost would be approximately $6,816. That would be a one-time expense in setting up the classroom. And what we tried to do was create a, an environment that could be closed up or taken down or moved so that if it's in the church, you could close it down on Fridays and open it up on Mondays. If it's in another place of your choosing, you will be able to do the same thing. Accordingly, if it's at the Jackson church, as we're recommending, it would be a one-time expense to ma, update the playground over there. Uh, I don't know if anyone's been over there lately, but it is a lovely, beautiful playground that has been built over there, but it is mostly geared towards children five and up. So in order to bring it down a little bit to the zero to five or three to five age group, there would be some expenses that would need to go along and we came up with about $6,000 for that line item. All told, the expenses would be $117,000, six, I'm sorry, $117,670. On the revenue side of things, and I'll explain this a little bit more on the next slide, but on the revenue side of things, as I, as I already mentioned, we have an anticipated revenue for before and after care of $6,660. And then an anticipated out-of-town tuition, were you to choose that, and again, we're not endorsing or proposing that, of approximately $18,000. That puts total revenue of $24,660. Taking the expenses, subtracting the revenues, you end up with a preschool cost, net cost of $93,010, which with the 10-student census that we think maybe we would get, would be approximately $9,301 per capita. So that you can understand how this would affect taxpayers, you'll see two scenarios at the bottom of the pro forma. The first one involves a tax increase without the one-time expense. And the reason we ran both scenarios was because we were thinking that should this project move forward, maybe there could be some creative thought about who pays for things. Maybe startup costs get paid for by, I don't know, a PTO fundraiser, looking at you, even. By parents, by donors, maybe there, a grant, maybe there's some creative way to defray these costs. So if you look at tax increases without the one-time expense, per thousand dollars, it looks to be 24 cents. So if you had a $300,000 home here in Jackson, you could anticipate a $72 tax increase. Now, without that one-time expense, we're looking for a $300,000 home at $63. To go back to what we relied on for our assumptions for that before and after care estimate and the tuition estimate, again, this was us trying to give you a snapshot and our best guess based on research and talking to people. Um, we thought if there are 10 children attending, perhaps two of them, worst-case scenario, will use the before and after care option. All told, it's three hours a day, two children times three hours a day, times an estimated $6 per hour, five days a week, 37 weeks a year, that comes out to $6,660. Again, to go back to the out-of-town tuition estimate, this was us giving you our best guess. If it, you, if you were to tuition kids in at $6,000, three children out of town, $18,000. How does this compare to the schools that Jackson residents currently use for early childhood education? It is not exactly apples to apples and oranges to oranges because our program is looking at nine to one, but the other programs that are offering early childhood education right now define half-day with different hours. So some of them are three and a half hours, some of them might be four, four hours. So some of them are three and a half hours, some of them might be four hours, some of them start earlier or later. What you'll see is that we try to scale things so that they match what we did. In doing so, it looks like Lilliputian is about $49.96, Mountain View is about $48.45, Bartlett is $49.98, and Waldorf is $78.90.
Jess, on those for Lilliputian and Mountain View and Bartlett, is that including the revenue or without their revenue? So is that what they charge minus revenues or is that what they broke this and they got?
So that is if you were to go to, if I as a parent go to their website, how we got that, so you know, we went to their websites and looked at what tuition would cost.
Not based on their budgets?
Not based on their budgets. We just looked at, if I want to send my son, how does that go to look for me to pay? We didn't actually speak with them. We used their website data, so if there are errors I apologize. Hopefully there aren't.
I guess what the meaning of my question is, how much of that tuition payment that they make is subsidized by donations and fundraising, I guess?
Right. That's a good question, yes.
Thanks.
And that's something that we would look at, that you could look at more in depth because you'll see that these are lower than what we would charge an out-of-state person, plus what our per capita cost would be. I can tell you, I have experience on one of the boards, they are greatly subsidized. And in fact, some of them have sliding scales based on the attendance and who can pay and who can't pay. So I play a lot of chess with my children. I love it. And I was thinking about that today after I did a dry run with my daughter of this presentation, and she actually gave me really good feedback on some things. So it got me thinking that, and I hope I can speak for the entire committee when I say this, we really try to think about being active about education and community as opposed to reacting to whatever comes down the pike. And in doing so, we try to think, whatever we're doing now is going to impact not only immediately, but in the future. So how can we kind of balance all these different things? We recommend that you act hopefully the way I'm teaching my kids to play chess, which is with strategy and with some forethought. And however that looks, we just want you to know that as a committee and as individuals, I think we all just want to be a resource for you from here on in. So the pieces of this proposal are all sort of malleable and changeable. You can change staffing, you can change supplies, you can change location, tuitioning, obviously before and after-care, and some things that we probably haven't even thought of. And in doing so, please feel free to let us know what you need, and we would be glad to help you with the process. Thank you, and if there are questions, I'm here. Yes?
My name is Janice Sanderpart, and I'm here representing the Jackson Community Church. Do you have a full packet?
Yes, we do. We have some extras here, so yes. Thank you for coming. We've been in touch with the Jackson church in a number of different scenarios, and for that, I would like to thank Christine Crowe, who kind of spearheaded all of that with us to gather information. Oh, yeah, Peter.
Hi, Peter Benson. I just want to say thank you very much for all the hard work, very supportive of the concept, but as many of these things are, the devil's in the details, especially, I think this is great for the school and the school community, the community at large, but I'm also interested as a church member in protecting the church too, so I want to make sure it's fair for the school and the church. And I don't think there's been a lot of conversation with the church. It's just starting. So there's going to be a lot of back and forth there. And when I heard you say creative solutions, that was very encouraging to me because I think there's some needs at the church that need to be met, and this goes beyond dollars. So I encourage that open-mindedness and creativity because I think if this works, it'll be terrific, but it's got to work for the school community, it's got to work for the church community and the community at large. Again, highly supportive of the concept.
I'd like to mention that, Peter, because one of my biggest questions was going to be, how long do we know that we can have with the church? And I'm assuming that that's going to be an ongoing discussion.
Well, thank you both for bringing that up because really, the way things have worked, as you know, when you were planning for something but not actually acting on it, we didn't want to go too far as a committee without getting, we felt like it was really more your job to do that sort of thing in terms of negotiating things and things like that because we weren't even sure you would want to move forward from here. You might say, "No, back to the drawing board" or whatnot. And we didn't feel like we could represent the school without move this step tonight. So that being said, I will say I think everyone on the committee felt very strongly that if there is a way to tighten the bonds, not only between us and the church, but us and the community, we would really love to see that. And of course, we started here because we wanted to respond to preschoolers' needs, but wouldn't it be a wonderful benefit if our count were strengthened into ties between generations as a matter of that? So that's been on our minds.
Again, and I think, again, completely supportive of the concept, but you know, many of you may not be aware that the church structure is somewhat unique, that there are actually two governing entities at the church that many people aren't aware of, and we have a new staff person coming on board who hasn't even started yet, who's the lead staff, new pastor, who's going to start in two weeks. So there's a lot, I'm just saying that there's a lot in play there.
Definitely.
And the church structure has a very defined and distinct voting process and timeline. So I encourage that conversation to happen soon rather than late. I'd be happy to be a part of that, too.
Christine Crowe, I just want to respond to you, Peter. I've been in touch with the church council before every one of their meetings, and I understand they only meet once a month. And we've tried to make this proceed more quickly, but we understand the process that the church has. So we are at the point, we are because of the process of truth for the church at this point. But while I'm standing, if I could just please applaud Jessica for her leadership. Sometimes it was like herding cats.
I must have missed those meetings.
Or maybe herding them into a bucket of water.
But Jessica, I feel brought out the best of each one of us in the committee, and we would not have gotten to this point without her leadership.
That's very true.
I have a couple more questions, and I'll go with the church right now because I've got a few there with Peter. I saw briefly in here, my first thing was legalities. I see Kevin looks covered that on the surface, that as long as there's no visible signs of religion in the vicinity there.
And that's going to be an ongoing conversation with the church.
Yeah.
They have not agreed to that at this point.
And then my other question on that, and again, I don't expect an answer right now because I know this has come up in the past when they're having private preschools there. Now that it's public, what you do is a wedding, funeral, et cetera.
And you know, that's not in the official proposal, but that was a scenario we sort of ran by, and what we figured is that that piece would be part of the larger campus. So just like when we looked at the Whitney option, one of the things we thought about was what do you do on voting day, and what do you do when there's something else in there? And so the idea is, again, to be creative, and you move them over, or you have a field trip, or you work that out.
I have lots more questions, but I'm going to wait and see if anybody else asks a question that I will ask.
I'll go first. I just have a quick question about the preschool numbers, Jess. My name is Melissa Markart, and I'm a parent and a resident. And the preschool numbers, were those based on data or were those just?
Our assumption for enrollment?
Yeah.
So those were based on the 2014, 2015 annual report. We do have a copy of just the page with the demographics and the cover so that you know where we got it from. You can find full copies of this town hall, or we could probably get you one. But what we did was we started with the anticipated enrollment for the school, and then, as you probably know, students move in and out at any given time, which is why it's a little bit hard to give a complete definite number. But what we did was we started with that, and then we said to Gail, "What does it look like?" And we also spent time talking to people, anyone we knew that was in this realm. We tried to pick their brains about what would be their needs, what would be their interests, would they attend, how would they do that? And so some of it is very official numbers, like the 2015 demographic census, and then updates from Gail and her staff, and then our own personal conversations with people.
Okay, and the demographics, do they go, how far of a radius do they go?
Well, it's just Jackson, grammar school.
It's just Jackson, so there was no demographics based on like other preschoolers in other districts like Bartlett or Conway?
No.
Because people from Conway have brought their kids over.
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the reasons we ruled out the Whitney in here was because it would put us at a maximum student census of seven to 10 kids. And one of the things that we heard from people is that if there was a preschool, that they could very strongly want to send their children here because they wish they could send them here for grammar school. And so we tried to do the worst-case scenario of three possible out-of-towners, and the census data we used for that was simply that they were outside the Jackson community. And we had heard people, and again, people will say anything, but if you actually signed the line, then we would know they were really doing it. But we have heard, I personally have heard from seven or eight people who said they would definitely do it. So we figured, well, maybe three, maybe we need to get three.
And if I could add to that, in order to do the Whitney Center or this building, it meant that we would have to negatively impact our Unified Arts program and use kind of the art and the cart model. And when I looked at the regulations, that was part of our building project, was to allow our students to have dedicated space for art, music, and PE, which is required under the school approval standards. So that more or less ruled out the Whitney Center. And then also, in order to have another class in here, we would have to combine three grade levels in a class, and we've had community members voice some concerns about that and board members voice concerns about doing that when we have proposed that in the past. So that didn't seem like the best educational option for our current students, even though it would have accommodated a preschool. So those were the other two things we considered when we ruled out the school and the Whitney Center as possible options.
Thank you, Gail. Sarah?
Yes, Sarah Collins. I'm questioning a bit about our existing, as you listed some here, Lilliputian, Mountain View, Bartlett, Waldorf. We also, as taxpayers in Jackson, provide monies to Children Unlimited for our preschoolers. And my concern, or one of my concerns, is what kind of an impact is it going to have on these schools and Children Unlimited, which we have also been giving monies to taxes for many, many years, and they just went through a big building project? Are we going to impact them in such a way that people could lose jobs? I mean, we're talking people that may work there who take their students there because they get a discount, or they know where their students are, or they're working and their children are there. That's a concern.
And it's one that our committee shared. I can tell you, we have, I think mostly, Lilliputian alumni, maybe some Mountain View. And we had more than one meeting where a significant amount of time was to that issue, which is if public preschool comes to the front of education, what happens to all of those schools that we are so loyal to and grateful to for what they did for our children? I don't have any answer to that. That's something that we have to decide in terms of priorities. What I can tell you is that part of the reason we are proposing a public preschool here in Jackson is because despite the fact that some of us are huge advocates for school choice, and we had advocates for government staying out of education and things like that, at the end of the day, what we know is that coming from the national level down to the state, down to our own SAU, there is a push for public preschool. And I mean, the SAU nine is currently doing a feasibility study, and information is being gathered. Bartlett has already considered it. I don't think it's on their agenda right now, but it may come around, we don't know. So it's something that we're trying to be aware of. And again, this all comes down to balancing, and that's why these conversations with this team were so difficult because there are a lot of really important interests, and we can't make everybody happy all the time. I sort of feel like we may have ended up with a pretty good process here because none of us really left this committee feeling like we want. None of us really felt like, "Yeah, we nailed this. We got exactly what we wanted." And that was us just trying to balance it. So I share your concern, and I know they share your concern. So thank you.
And I think just to add on to that, one of the other concerns for me is that there are some youngsters and families in this community that either don't have vehicles or don't have the financial wherewithal to drive their children to North Conway. So therefore, by providing it in your own community, you can enable equal access to preschool for every child regardless of family income and demographics. So that was important.
And on that transportation thing was one of my other questions, and I guess maybe Kevin's going to have to look, but I believe that if we build a public preschool, we have to provide transportation.
You know, we, sorry, you go ahead, Kevin.
No, no, go ahead.
We have a number of questions about the realities that we sense of the pipeline on various things. That was one of the questions we looked at. We would need to get a full, kind of, regulatory answer on that, but what we found was that the Department of Ed regulates six and up. This would be a voluntary public preschool, and as such, we would try to, we would not be required to provide transportation, but I would definitely want to check that again.
Unless we had a student service.
Right. Which we already do.
So, and just, I don't know if everyone heard, Gail, so we do do that already for other students who require. The other thing we thought, because we thought long and hard about that transportation piece, right? Because part of what we wanted to do was provide that equity for kids who might not be able to afford choice, you know, the parents can't afford choice. So how do you go about getting those kids where they need to go if they don't have a parent that can do it, even here in Jackson? And we thought, well, again, we're going to have to be creative because the expense of a bus and all of that, we just felt it outweighed the possibility that maybe we can get a co-op going for parents, you know, or a carpool, or we could have to, we're going to put this on the PTO, maybe you could help us organize those.
And ask us to go to our car van.
And then when we did the Bartlett-Jackson comparables, we looked up that our current buses can be retrofitted with a three-point harness and booster seat. So in that event, we could potentially use our own school buses that we already currently own.
But then you need to hire somebody to be on the bus.
Yeah, we did discuss this. And as a parent on the board, we did say that we were, you know, I don't want to speak for the other mom, but to put our three-year-olds on the bus wasn't a really good feeling.
I mean, if you're going to have middle schools on these buses, 14-year-old kids with a four-year-old and a 14-year-old, that would really concern me if we had to go to that.
Sarah Collins, again, I understand and feel that we all want our children educated well and provided education, but I do have to speak up and say, having a few years here in Jackson, that we had to transport our children to North Conway or into Bay for preschool and/or kindergarten, and we had to pay for it out of our pocket. We did not get kindergarten in our public school. We had to pay for it.
Yes.
So we carpooled, and we did everything we did to get our children there. And I personally would like to think that maybe these parents would do the same thing for theirs.
I think the question was not that would we do that, but legally, we make sure that we're not required.
Well, there again, I'm saying that even if we do not proceed with this, or we do, that I would like to think that the parents of these children that we're talking about, projected seven plus three, that they would find the means to take care of their children and make sure that they got the opportunity for this education. As I say, when you have children, they are, they have a responsibility, and it would be nice to feel that if this doesn't come into fruition, that, you know, they will make sure that their children. Plus, do not we test three-year-olds to make sure if there's any need for them to be in a facility or to get preschool?
We make those services available. Parents come to us. We don't require it of everyone, but the parents can come to us and request. We take a look at where their child is developmentally and whether or not he or she would qualify for special education.
So to go to what you're saying, which is, you know, isn't it a parent's responsibility and right to educate our children as we see fit, right? It is. It's our right responsibility, but what we know is that there are parents who, for whatever reason, don't know how to navigate the system, they don't understand that they can have that checked, and so we know that there are children that are not getting that done. And so that early intervention piece, it's not just about education, it's about early intervention for any number of things, right? So one of the things we know is that if those kids don't get picked up until they're five or six or seven, and we have some experts in the audience that could probably speak to this better than I can, but the later you pick it up, the harder it is for that child to be successful. So that's one of the things that has kind of spurred this for us. Melissa, did you have something to say?
Yeah, hi, Melissa Grady. I just had a question. The insurance for $345 seems like you must have, was it a sale there?
I will.
Yeah, I'd like to go to that store and get my insurance.
That was just to add to our current insurance, so it's not like we were a new policy. This was adding them onto the school.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Just how many students?
Jumped out at me like, wow.
So maximum, what we're looking at right now is about 20?
That's what the church says, their maximum is 20.
20 is, we could accommodate that.
Do we want to ask lots of questions?
I think we should try to, I think there's going to be a lot to come out of this, and I'd like... and I'd like to kind of wrap this part of it up, I think, for now, and see where we go with it. First off, I'd like to very much thank the committee for the work that was done. It really was pretty good. Did any of the committee members have anything they wanted to add before we wrap up the conversation?
I think I would just echo what Christine said about Jessica, so we had some real conflicts that arose between the members, and we came, were brought to the table by Jessica to kind of come together. She did hours, I can't tell you the amount of research she did, when she says we talked and read legal briefs, and it wasn't we who read the legal briefs.
I think I would also like to thank Pam Stinson, who although wasn't a voting member, she was a great
Resource.
Resource for us, too, and helped bring us back to the table a few times. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to say I have one concern, and that is the cost. These costs are de minimis at the best. It's only the beginning. So, the costs will only go up. The rent was for that one year, and the church already has said that there would be an increment yearly for the rent. You know the insurance is gonna go up, and when it's already over $9,000 for pupil, for a three-year-old, I have a grave concern about that.
They are future, though, so.
Oh, yeah, and if I could just, because when we were, when the Bartlett Board was presented by, and I forget her name, but the chairman of the Board for the Bartlett Preschool.
Oh, Birdy, right?
Yeah, right, 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 thank you. Didn't she mention, I swear I remember this, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought she mentioned that, like, she had noticed it had just gotten to be just much more burdensome to keep that going, and that she thought it would close down in probably a couple of years. And I know by serving on the Lilliputian Board for a couple of years, when he was there, so maybe three years ago, Lilliputian is, their finances are held together by a wing and a prayer, a role adaptive, and I'm amazed they're still in business. So it's, I mean, I think our options will be limited, and I know you were kind of mentioning that it's, one of the things you're concerned with is putting people out of work and stuff. And I think kind of that's common anyways. I mean, I don't know, but just my take of things, so, that, kind of, because I have your concerns as well about, you know, taking over the private sector kind of thing with public, and so that kind of eased my mind a little bit with that, because I just thought it was kind of the writing on the wall kind of deal.
Keith, you guys?
Yeah, I just, I, one more thing to say, saying this, and this is being a realist, not a pessimist, I see that your proposals for the 2017, 2018 school year?
Yes.
Just know that our first budget hearing is in two weeks, and
That's what I was gonna talk about, but, I mean, we need, the first thing we need to do is next steps. And where do we see this going? And I would like to say towards that, Keith, and particularly with where the budget season goes, I mean, first off, let's really open up and ask what a gargantuan task this committee was tasked with for the 17, 18 school year, really considerable, and at this point, how realistic is that, I think is one question we really need to answer first. Is it realistic for you to consider it for the 17, 18 school year at this point? And I would very much say in regards to that, and this is extremely important to the committee to understand, if it is something that we're gonna propose for this year, we really need to get to work, because what we need to do as a community, I know some of these, most of people in the room right now attend our annual school board meeting, and this is about it. This is about how many people we get into our school, annual school meeting every year. This is going to be a very big question for us to answer as a community, and do we want to tackle this with the budget implications that they are? One thing that we really need to do is tackle that issue. If we have 15 people show up at our school board meeting, and all 15 of those people are very much for this, how fair is it to do this? So I think the first thing that we really need to do is come to an agreement that if we do put it in as a proposal for the 17, 18 school year, I think that the first and foremost, it needs to be a separate warrant article, that people can vote on separately. And if we do that, not only do we have to have a budget hearing about it, but we need to have a community forum for, and a discussion for, because we need to get the word up that we're doing it, so that we have fair discussions about what we do. So I think that, in my mind, those are kind of the next steps, is that, because we need to decide that it's a separate warrant article, and then we need to decide to have a community forum for. And I think, you know, as Penny pointed out, we didn't do a very good job in getting the sixth-grade discussion there. I think we need to have a little bit of creative thought on how we present that forum and when we schedule it. And maybe that's what we should do now, is just try to do that. Does that seem like probably the next step, is to have a community forum, see how much further we go? And then I think that individually, maybe we all kind of write down our questions and get them back to Jess to start answering some of the more important details, because when we have the community forum, I think we want to be able to have a lot of those answers available.
Unfortunately, we might be limited a bit by the timeline of the church, because the church has not even said, yes, they're willing to do this. So we have to wait, and the church wants more answers from us, and they want to see exactly what we would do and what we would need to cover or remove in the, in the room. Because their council only meets once a month, I think that it's going to prolong the discussion.
With the understanding that the time is condensed because of our own budgeting and what's going on with the church, we did try to get as much information, like, for example, a big issue is what would that fellowship hall look like if we were to take over? What would the playground look like? So we did our best effort to go in, measure, look at best practices and things like that for both inside and outside, and give you detailed lists, so that would
And we gave that to the church, but now we have to hear back from the church.
Right. So it would probably be something where you need, we would need to figure out how to move forward with the church to get that information, to make sure that's actually a viable option.
And I guess, maybe to start as a viable option, I think we would have to agree as a board is what we wanted to, in the first place.
Right.
So I guess the question that we can answer right now, and I don't think we need to take a vote on it, is if consensus really is, is, does the church sound like that's our option at this point?
I'm not opposed, as long as we cover all of our legal bases about it being in the church.
So I think that the first probably task to do, we've got November meeting, and then we've got budgets in December. Who wants to, I mean, Jess, I hate to throw everything on you, but it seems like you're probably
My team and I are at your disposal. I'm my right baby's end. Now we are done today.
I thought you said it was done.
Don't you told them, I'm like, you guys, you just have to come to the 17
Just kidding, no, whatever you need.
Whatever you need.
Nice job.
Oh, thank you.
Scott, thanks for having me, Nancy, thanks for having me.
Thank you, sorry.
Whatever you need.
Yeah.
I think that, okay, if we're in agreement that the church is probably our best option is where we want to go, we need to have a serious conversation with the church and get those details ironed out. I think that that's probably the first step. And beyond that, I don't really know. Melissa?
I just, I wondered if the church would consider meeting not just once a month for this particular
Maybe just ask them to have a meeting.
To have a subcommittee, perhaps, but I don't know. I'm just thinking about
Well, we have representation here, do you guys have any thoughts on what's going on over there?
Well, then, the next council meeting is this Wednesday, and then to reiterate, our new minister starts November 1st, and then it's the third Wednesday for the next council meeting in her presence.
Okay.
Well, just in terms of timing also, the two entities that have responsibility for the church are, is the church body, their annual meetings in January, and there's also the actual owner, the owners of the church property is not the church, it's the Chapel Association. This is where it gets confused, which is only 40 pew holders, old-school stuff, but I would imagine that they would have to be
Consulted.
Consulted on this as well. So there's, there's, this is why I say there's multi-steps. I would encourage there to be a representative body of the school and the church that comes together to start to hammer all this stuff out. I think it's doable, from a budgetary standpoint, you just need to do it as a warrant article and provisionally based on, you know, signing an agreement with the church if you get to that point. So, but that's just the broader timeline.
And I think it can be worked out, too, but I, I want to back up a little bit, too, and be very clear about where we're at as a board now. When I say, you, we're kind of in agreement that the church is our option, it doesn't mean that we're in agreement that we're
That it's our only option.
That we're actually going to do it. Like, we're, this is a process that we're gonna work through.
I think the church thinks the same thing.
Yeah. It's a term.
Yes, he, he mentioned it being a warrant article, and I'm, and I'm listening to you say that it's, very few people show up here and you want it to be, you know, a good representation of the town. Is there any way that rather than have it be in your warrant, it could be on the ballot as we vote for?
Unfortunately, there's not a way to do that.
But it would be a warrant article for the town meeting, not for the school.
Correct. Well, no, it would be a warrant article for the school annual meeting. Now, it's not a concern with that, because a town meeting gets 250 people to, we usually have 15. So I think that if
That's what I suggest for the ballot.
To me, that's what we need to do, it would, I thought the same thing, Sarah, and my first thought is, it would be nice to do a ballot, unfortunately it can't be a ballot, it would have to be a warrant article. It's not something that can go on, on the ballot, as far as I know. So, we're stuck with it being on the warrant article, and that's why I mentioned, it would be really important for the community for us to really put out an effort to get the community to, to participate in that. And I think, and that's why I say, some sort of form would have to be the first start to that, and we would need more than 15 people to show up at our annual school board meeting. I think that if, if we get to that point, we only have 15 people show up, we would have to have serious consideration that, I don't, whether we even, you know, offer it, and how we would sell it that evening. So I think we have a lot of work to do in that regard between now and then. And I think that part's doable, but we do have a lot of questions that we need to answer ourselves, I think, before we can present something to the community, even for the first forum. But what I'm wondering is, can we do that between now and November, and schedule a forum in November, or should we think about scheduling a forum for December, probably right before our budget hearing, our first budget hearing on hold? Is that
I just think December is so hard to get people in.
It is.
Community-wise, there's so many events.
So, as far as the, the next meeting, who, who do we need to bring to that table?
Not sure yet, but, so, and again, I guess that also brings us to, is the budget hearing the best place to have that?
Oh, I thought you meant a community event.
Well, no, it was, yes.
Oh, okay.
And you're saying December isn't good, it really isn't. Maybe what we decide to do in our timeline is, is get it ready for our budget hearing, and make our budget hearing when we really do have that broad discussion with the community. And that would probably be in January sometime.
There is old correspondence and documentation of the pre-existing arrangement with the old preschool?
We already have that.
Yeah, you've got all, okay, good. Any other connections?
The magic has the contract, so magic
So why don't we hold off on scheduling any kind of forum right now? Why don't we, as a board, put down our questions to paper, get them to Jess, she can put them together, and begin conversations with the church on ironing out some of the details?
Okay.
Does that sound like a good
And if there are other questions, obviously from you folks, yeah?
I'm just curious, you said you, I happen to have sent back my questionnaire, but how many, how many questionnaires did you get returned to you that you sent out about this to begin?
So, we, we sent it out, hopefully, as you saw, through as many means as we could, and I think not everyone filled out the questionnaire exactly. Some people wrote us letters and things like that, which we have. And I think there were between 40 and 50 responses. There were a number of telephone calls, I had a number of cups of coffee with people that just, they didn't feel comfortable writing, they wanted to talk about it, so, I, and I will say, it really was a wonderful thing, because we got people talking that we didn't even know had opinions about it. So, that was very helpful to us.
Right, well, at least it was a better than 15.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, definitely. What we, what we found is if you have a large community meeting versus a carousel discussion versus something that's online versus, there are so many different personality types, that people responded to different ways of outreach. So, we, we felt like we were lucky that they came at us in many different ways. I joked about the forty potty, but it was actually super awesome, because the person was very helpful and interesting, so that was cool, so.
Thank you.
I, I just applaud your efforts as well. At the very, very basic, this brings this entire issue up to more and more and more folks, because it's, it's vital, and I think, again, through all those avenues of communication, where we get the word out about this, and the unbelievable complexity of it all. I think that's what people are beginning to understand. Thank you.
And that's actually where I was going with my pessimistic versus realistic comment, that if this doesn't happen, I hope you guys don't go away, and I hope you're coming back to us with one that says 2018, 2019, if timing doesn't work for this
Yeah, well, whatever, I mean, you know, I'm really goal-oriented, so when you asked us to come back for the 2017, 2018 year, I just was like, we are getting back there before that, when you told us the latest week was October, I'm like, we're gonna do this, people, for no matter what time. So, yeah, whatever happens, you know, we're at your disposal.
Yeah, I hope if it, you know, if it's simply for timing reasons, and it doesn't make it the next school year, I hope it doesn't burst into everybody's bubble and it disappears. I hope you guys don't go away.
No, we want to do it right. So however that takes, do it right.
Also, if I could say, I really, like Jerry said this right off the bat, that he wanted to do it at some kind of a vote thing, as opposed to us, like, voting on the school board, and I thought that was really wise, because that completely changed my, like, view of what we were doing on this committee. And so I felt like we were sort of putting this plan together so that people could, could vote on it, you know, and this is, you know, the best plan that we, we could come up with, having all the information that we had, and, and then it wasn't just gonna be us five, like, voting and ramming it down people's throats, this is how we want it. It was more of community kind of voting, so I thought that was really nice, and took a lot of pressure off. It's a good process.
Thanks again for, yeah, for Jess.
Yeah, Jess, we got you.
That doesn't bring us
I think we'll have to go back to the recap of listening, we skipped over that one, too, to move to that one. So we did hold a listening post on sixth grade, and it's where it is in Jackson, and the future of where it could be. And I, I think that was a good discussion, we did have a fair number of people show up to that meeting, and from that meeting, we didn't really decide to do anything quite yet, because we weren't quite sure where to go with it. But we, this, this board, anyway, is committed to send our sixth graders to Jackson for the 17, 18 school year. I think we're all pretty well, very strong for that. But seeing the information that you, you put together for this, can we get this committee to
I think I'm pregnant.
After next spring, when we get through this part of it? One of the things that, we are going to send our sixth graders here next year, it's, and hopefully, I think, foreseeable future, but that's my only opinion on it. But I think that we do need to do some legitimate homework on that, and to do a study like this for that issue, to get to the answer of that, and to, so that the board can make a viable decision for that in the future. And I think, given that we have decided to do that, we are sending our sixth graders here for, for 17, 18, Bartlett's actually, you know, considering the middle school for the following year, anyway, so it's not even for next year, I'd like to see this be a discussion that we have in the spring, to start it up again, and see where we want to go with it. How does that sound to the board? Penny, I don't want to keep pushing you down the road, but does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Because, again, we, we are firmly committed to having them here next year.
I don't know, I understand.
And I would like to have an actually honest, very thorough discussion about it, and I think that to do it in a better way, and to task it better, to have a better plan on how we tackle that issue, I think until we get through our budget season, this is a very big thing for us to consider, I think that if we take it up again there in spring, we'd have a more thorough ability to have better answers for what we do.
The good news is Penny was on the committee for this, she knows exactly what it would be.
I didn't share it.
But I do thank you for the email that you sent, because I, and I do, maybe next we don't bring it, because it really, it taught me, anyway, that when we schedule these things, when we do these things, we do need to frame them better, we do need to communicate them better, so that we know what we're doing. So thank you for that.
We move on to old business, I don't think that we really have to consider anything for the, what we consider to use issue. At this point, let's just continue to review the salary schedule for hiring, I think that we do have a first draft presented for us. I think it was, no, it was an exit...
No, there is a draft in there. You can pack it. So, that'd be it. Yeah. You know, I met with some, because I'm on the personnel committee, so I met with a few teacher representatives, and they just, you know, had questions, you'd expect something new coming up, so I just wanted to explain, but they liked it, they had a couple of suggestions. Do you want to go into that, Dan, or...
Probably not.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just talk with you after, because Jerry's on that personnel committee as well, so. But, yeah, it was a great meeting, we have great staff, they're awesome, and they liked the look of it, looked good for them.
So, why don't we, again, digest this, this meeting, we'll bring it to the next one, Mr. Lucas, some time to have another reading of that before we put it into our budget. So, let me put that off for next meeting.
Do you have any facility on that too? Because I think you would have a touch on that.
I can tell you, we just had a meeting today, and we don't have much new to report right now, we're still editing things and changing, so we, so it's, to be continued, they're working on it.
Any instructional issues?
I don't know.
No personnel actions to consider, budget status report, any questions there? Superintendent reports?
Yeah, real quickly, so, you did give the hiring schedule proposal, but we should also take a look at the other personnel policies and to probably answer some of the questions in that, related to some of the non-teaching staff as well. So, that's you and Jerry, so we should probably, in the next couple of weeks, get together, I'll talk with the staff here, get some of their input, and we'll get a meeting together. Does that make sense?
So, talk with the staff first, before we meet with you?
Uh, yeah, I'll get a feel for where they're at.
Okay, okay, okay.
Different representatives, not everybody, but support staff as well.
But meet with you, Jerry and I should meet with you.
Yeah, and then I'll set something up. Just writing a quick note here, so, last year, last couple of years, the strategic plan has come out, a lot of work, a lot of community input, we've done a monitoring piece as well, okay? I didn't print out, if you want hard copies, we want these emailed, scanned to you, but what it really is, is it takes all the six focus areas, breaks it down, color codes, where are we at, are we moving forward, this relates to Jackson as well, you can see, some of these areas, we're really moving forward, others we haven't begun yet, and really the timeline progress, and then it breaks it even into more detail about some of the action steps that are taken. So, it's a pretty hefty document, I did a photocopy, it's on the website, but if you would like a electronic copy or a hard copy, let me know, anybody in the community, we will get those to you folks. It really is, it's holding our feet to the fire as administration as well, those common goals in kind of keeping track and evaluating our progress as we move forward for the next five years. And I think that's it for me.
So, I had my principal's report first thing when you first came in, I just wanted to let you know that the Ferry Beach will be our next task that we'll be working on, and the sixth graders have been meeting with me on a weekly basis, they have lots of ideas, so, you'll be hearing more and more about the sixth grade student council as we move forward.
Thanks for doing this, girl.
Ferry Beach was awesome, and one of the things that, I've gone maybe five times, and I got the most sleep with this group of kids that I've ever gotten, so that's always good. At nine o'clock when the lights were off, no, no, your boy was down the other end of the hall, so. But, no, it was great, and they were really well...
Best weather, probably.
We had awesome weather, it was perfect, it was in the mid-'70s, crystal clear, blue sky, it was really fun.
Thanks, girl. Are there any citizen comments? Joe?
Do you need a copy of what the kids read? Anybody?
Um, yeah, I would like to have a copy of it.
I mean, I need to find it, remake copies for you. I could bother you afterwards to get all of their names, because... Yeah, oh, yeah, I'll write the whole thing for you, so, pretty nice.
Oh, yeah, and should we put last names in the minutes? Does that, in case of that matter? I mean, they are at a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
I guess it matters either way.
I think the parents will all be, except for, first and last names?
Jen said to give her, Johnson, hard times, a little one too.
Sure, it's whatever is okay for me to put in.
Yeah.
To you.
Thanks, Joe. Sure. Whatever issues?
The only thing against the dance, just to let you guys know, Dan, I have a first question. Kevin and Gail, and the third, number three.
Remember third, attempt third.
To add to the budget, Hank, we need to put that in our budget.
Align it in the budget.
Align it in the budget for videotaping.
School board services.
School board services.
We'd be able to get that number to Gail.
Yeah. The number to base on, I believe, will be, Kevin, it'd be $50 or $55 a meeting that we'd be adding into, and it would be as an employee of the school district, I believe, so those are the numbers that would be computing the budget number four.
Do you see, so that's, who's 60?
55.
Hank, do you know by chance what, just as a reference, what you charge the town?
Uh, sure, yeah, I charge the town $50 per meeting.
$50 per meeting.
And there are two board meetings a month, so that would be like $100 total, so, because...
I'm just trying to get a number, what we would base our budget on, so we'd just base it on $50 a meeting, I think that will... And that's just what we put in the budget, that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with you, Hank.
Okay.
Say.
Okay.
Um, I'll be here for the, to the budget, but I'm more of a the one. Next meeting, November 21st, this is being assigned, but from a public entertaining motion to adjourn.
Excuse me. That was clear.
Thank you very much, Jeff.